Start with a roll call vote, please. Mayor Walter?
Here.
Vice Mayor Woolridge is absent. Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Councilmember Gleene?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Wall?
Here.
Councilmember Larson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll stand for a moment of silence. Please keep in mind everything that's going on in our worlds today, as well as we're coming upon the Christmas and holiday seasons, and those that are abroad or away from our families And the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, we will open our call to the public. The first call to the public is for public comment on issues within jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comments to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. In the back there are sign up sheets for those that wish to talk. Do we have any call to the public this evening? Okay, is there anybody that wish to say anything that has not filled one out? Okay, thank you very much. Close call to the public. This evening, we have presentations, so we will move on to Item 6A, and I'm going to turn it over to Brent at this time.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, very proud to be part of the team to present the comprehensive financial audit for fiscal year 1516. Tonight, from Henry Horn, our certified public accountant that provides these documents for us, Ms. Marilyn Mays is here to present on behalf of the Town of Florence and Henry
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. You do have the financial statements in front of you. It's the comprehensive annual financial report. We have performed our audit on these financial statements in accordance with the government auditing standards and have issued an opinion on these statements. They are fairly presented as you see them, and our report is on page one. It is an unmodified opinion, meaning that the statements are fairly presented. In the prior year, there was an accounting change that required a restatement of your financials. There was another accounting standard that went into effect in these financial statements, but the statements are comparative to the prior year. The accounting pronouncement only added disclosures to your, the notes to your financials. So they are comparative. We also issued, the town also received over $800,000 of federal dollars. Whenever you receive more than 750, it requires a single audit, what we will call a single audit, which is basically an audit for compliance purposes of the spending of those federal dollars. So we did issue two more reports just on the federal funding, and those reports you can find in the back of these financial statements. And it's a report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance, and a report on the compliance for the major programs. There were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses this year. We also issued a report on the annual expenditure limitation. The town's limitation that was approved was $32 million. The amount, though, that was actually spent, subject to that amount, was $26 million. So you were under the expenditure limitation of just short of $6 million. And that is my report. If there were any questions?
After reading the report and what we've seen prior, it was very detailed. Is there any member of council that has any questions at this time? Okay, there's no questions at this time. Brent, do you have anything else that you'd like to add?
Having been through quite a few audits in my past on multiple different levels, I would like to say that Henry and Horn was very professional. Their folks were expedient in their process, very thorough and detailed in making sure that everything was properly done, but not only that, that there was proper opportunities for our staff to clarify, provide additional information, and actually went above and beyond to assist us in making sure that we provided what we needed to provide, the clarification that needed to be provided, and that the documentation was done properly. And I guess it's without saying that great thanks goes out to our finance department team, Mr. Gabe Garcia, who's not with us anymore, and especially Ms. Marcia, who is our senior accountant, for the time, effort that they put in with Henry and Horn in terms of completion of this audit, but with all of the thousands of hours that led up to the successful audit, and their due diligence and the quality of work that they performed. So I wanted to personally thank our staff, everyone here, but most importantly, the finance department in terms of their diligence, record keeping, and provisions concerning the audit. So thank you to all involved.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I do need a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the town's comprehensive annual financial report.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, presentation number two is the presentation on the team leadership program and a recap of fall activities. Brian Hughes.
Good evening, Mayor Walter, council members. As you know, our teen program has only been around for a short time. We started out over the summer months with some informal meetings that quite a few kids kind of came to. It always helped when we had some pizza to kind of bribe them to attend our meetings. But we got started with a very small group, and that group's grown. In August, the teen council, Florence Teen Council, came to the council and gave an update on what they worked on over the summer and kind of some of the things that they wanted to do in the fall. So Coco and the teens are here tonight to give you another update on what they've been doing for the last few months, and maybe a hint as to what's going to be going on in 2017. So with that, I'll turn it over to Coco and the teens.
Good evening, Mayor Walter, council members. Thank you for having us tonight, and congratulations for you guys coming in. We have a new council member there. Welcome, welcome. We have a brand new mayor. How good is that? Today, brought a few of our FTC members here, and we're going to give you a brief summary of, just like Brian said, what we've done over the past 60 days. And if you guys are unfamiliar with the Florence Teen Council... The clicker works. Okay, I'll use the mouse. Okay. The on button. Alrighty. So the Florence Teen Council, we meet every Monday and Wednesday, and we usually meet for a couple hours. We meet at the high school, or we'll meet at the community center. Once we're in our meetings, we plan our activities and we plan our events. Now, when we're putting together an event, we get together and we're like, okay, what are the needs? What are we going to need to make this event successful? So once we go over our needs, we do our cost assessment and cost analysis. And you guys know, once you go through the cost analysis, the needs kind of go down a little bit, and it happens to us as well. So sometimes they get a little frustrated because they didn't get everything they wanted, but that's part of life. Speaking of life, life skills. Life skills is very, very important. There's times where I'll bring in a video or bring some handouts, and we'll talk about peer pressure, we'll talk about abuse, we'll talk about finances or how to get a job, we'll also talk about controlled substances. And we do that because we want the teens to be able to go out and make a conscious decision of what their next step is going to be. Education. Education is paramount, and we believe that education will show you what your future is going to be, and we strongly believe that. So after we've had our meetings, after we do our events and our activities, we come back together and we evaluate, how did the last event go? What were some things that we liked? What were our strengths? And where are our areas of development? And so we kind of reconstruct things and prepare for our next event. And the teens here, they believe that outreach is really, really, really important. And the way that we reach out to the community, one way is through special events. So here to talk about some of our special events, we have Megan.
This year, the Florence Police Department hosted their first annual game event. The event attracted members of the community and softball teams from around the county. The FTC was asked to provide music and entertainment. We made balloon hats for the kids, played music for the crowd, and had a special performance from the national dance champion, Aliana Escobedo. It was great to see our community and officials come out for this event. Thank you so much, Sergeant Morris, for inviting us out. Now introducing Jeriah, who will be talking about the special needs Halloween party.
What's Halloween with, what's October without Halloween? We helped put together a special needs Halloween party for the Tempe High School district. Nearly 300 special needs high school students came there in their Halloween gear, enjoyed a mini circus, danced, and grabbed the microphone and held their own concert. We had a wonderful time, and we're looking forward to providing this event for the special needs students of Florence. And here to, and now here to talk about the Christmas on Main is Junior.
Doing events for the community is fun. So are the teen events. But what's more fun than that? Enjoying an event with your family. And what better song to get the entire family on the dance floor than the YMCA? The Christmas on Main was a great event and parade. The streets were packed, and we would like to thank the Parks and Recreation Department for inviting us. Thank you.
Good job, Junior. He's in junior high school, that kid right there. So, speaking of holidays, what's a holiday out here in Florence without a good old fashioned hold down, huh? So this past Thursday, the Florence Teen Council held its very first holiday hold down for wonderful senior citizens here in Florence. Look at them, I mean, there was almost 100 people that came out for the first time. We had food, we had music, we had dancing, we had a band there. It was phenomenal to see all the members out there on the dance floor dancing and enjoying themselves. And I'll tell you what, this event was very, very impactful, and we want to thank everybody that came in attendance. And we'd also like to thank everyone that helped to put this together. We hooked up with Laura from the senior center, and she provided us with some members to help to put it all together, and she helped to disseminate the information and get everyone there. So Laura, thank you very much. Aaron Nelson, he was the band. I told him what we were doing, and he's like, Coco, I gotta be there, I gotta sing. And he lives out in north, north, north Scottsdale, and he said, I have to be there. So he brought his band member, and they sang, and it was phenomenal. At the community center, we have a lot of big round tables, no linens. And so my friend Jeremy, he said, listen, don't worry about it. I got you covered. Took a lot of people to put this together. And speaking of putting it together, Brian and David from Parks and Rec, they were the first ones there. They put up the tables and swept, made sure everything looked good, the decoration, they did all the decorations. They were the first ones there. They were the last ones to leave, they had to mop, put everything away. So thank you, thank you, thank you very much. So, I'm really good at certain things. Buying cooking food for 100 people is not one of my strengths. So, I mean, I have two kids, but I don't cook for them, so, but Peter at Mount Athos, he was my man. He's like, Coco, don't worry about it. You know, I said, do I buy this? How much fettuccine? Don't worry, I got you covered. So I showed up the day of with a great big thing of salad that I put in the freezer the night before, and I didn't know that salad turns brown because it's in the freezer. He said, don't worry. He left, he went and made a salad, came back. So Peter, Peter, thank you very much for what you did. The events that we do for the Florence Teen Council, they aren't free. This next young lady gave from the heart and made it possible for the teens here in Florence to host events. So at this moment, I'd like to bring Kathy Adams. Kathy, come on up. And I also like the members to come up here also. So Kathy, we want to give you the official FTC Florence Teen Council shirt, and we'd love to take a picture with you. Want to say the backdrop? You guys want to say the backdrop?
And the people who know you.
Give her a hand once, one more time, one, please. And council members, Mayor, what you guys have done this past few months for the teens here have made 2016 unforgettable. This was the band that we had at the event. Once again, on behalf of council members, the mayor, Town of Florence, FTC, once again, we want to thank you guys for an unforgettable 2016. Thank you very much.
Excellent presentation. Our next item is Item C. It's a presentation on the Fire Safe Senior Program.
Good evening, Mayor Walter, members of the council. I wanted to take a few minutes to tell you about a new program that the fire department is implementing here in Florence, beginning January 1, 2017. It's called the Fire Safe Seniors Program. It's actually modeled after a program that's done nationwide that identifies as senior citizens for a program that increases their safety in the home. Why do we do this? Because as a group, members that are older, 65 and older, are twice as likely to die in a fire at 85. They're almost four times as likely to die in a fire than the rest of the population. So they are, they are more at risk. In fact, locally, we have had two fatal fires in Florence in the last five years. We had one up in our Parkway and another one in the Caliente Park. Both fatalities were elderly folks in their homes when the fires occurred. We've recently been able to garner several grants together in which we've been able to purchase 261 smoke detectors along with 60 nightlights, possibly access to more than that, but it's a great starting point. And so the most bang for the buck is to take those to the most threatened segment of the community, that being the elderly or seniors, as we call them. So how does it work? Well, there's a home assessment that the crews go out and do. It's totally voluntary basis. So if the individuals in the home want the assessment, we'll go out, perform an assessment. At that time, we'll look at any existing fire hazards in the home. At that time, if the smoke detectors are more than 10 years old, then we will offer to replace those at no charge until we run out. And then we also provide education to the residents of the home in terms of how to stay safe. So there's a lot to the inspection form. This is what it looks like. This actually stays with the residents. So we have a waiver that we ask them to sign before we start our inspection, then we go through this checklist in their home, and then we visit with them about the things we found and leave this with them for follow up. We're adding this. This isn't part of the other program. It's an EMS program, though, that will help them on those types of responses. It's called Vial for Life. We'll have enough to do 500 homes with this program. And what it is, it's basically a program where you put medical information in a known location. So when the crews respond to the call, or an EMS call, if they see a little red sticker on the door, then they know that the patient's information is on the refrigerator door with a magnet holding it up. So it really saves a lot of time for the medics to be able to access that medical information quickly during an EMS call. If the patient is unconscious, then that information is still available to our crews. So there's a four-step process there on the left, where you fill the form out, you place the decal on the baggie, you put the baggie on the refrigerator door, and then you put the second decal on the front door. That way, the crews go in, they see the sticker, they know the information's there. There's over 2 million kits in use, so this is, this program's been going on for a long time, it's very well established. But this is, we're going to do this at the same time we do our home inspections. How do you request an inspection? There's three ways. I'm going to start going to the parks. My first visit is with Caliente Park, and I had, Jerry Sullivan was supposed to be here tonight, he's the manager for Caliente, and he was going to speak to you about this program, but he unfortunately got called out right before the meeting. But he did ask me to share with the group that he has met with his board several times. They're very excited about this program coming to the park. I will be making a presentation to them on the 7th of January, at which time I will have a sign up sheet for them if they want to sign up right then for an inspection. If they want to think about it and get back to us, they can either call the fire station later. Lavanna Perez, our administrative assistant, will arrange the details of the inspection, or they can go on the website. The website's available now, and you just click on the links, go to the page, fill out a short form, and then the electronic information also goes to Lavanna, and she'll schedule the crews from there. So that's really it in a nutshell. We're excited about being able to do this, and we really want to enhance the fire safety, especially with the elderly in the community, and obviously, the entire community, but we want to focus on those folks in this particular program. Are there any questions?
Chief, your example said mobile homes. Are you, you're doing anybody that calls, right?
This is a senior program for any seniors. We're just, to reach the most people the quickest, we're going to go to Caliente and Florence Gardens, and any of the groups that would like to hear about it, we're going to do a coffee club at the library. It's just those types of meetings. I've talked to the chamber about doing it with them, so yes, anyone 55 or older is eligible for. We'll do a home inspection for anyone that wants one. But the smoke detector installation and the no charge and the grant money goes to the seniors.
Thank you.
I really like this idea. I'm glad that you're bringing it forward and bringing it to all the areas in our community. Also, if we can get it on our website to when you're going to be doing presentations to what community, that would be helpful just to enhance the communication.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, item number seven is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda, unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Fire, Building Safety and Life Safety, Office of Manufactured Housing. Item B, authorization to enter into a marketing license agreement with Utility Services Partners Private Label Incorporated to provide optional protection on external water lines, external sewer lines, and in-home plumbing lines. Item C, recommendation of an approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control on the Florence Gardens Mobile Home Association's applications for their keg and cork events to be held on January 5th, January 19th, February 2nd, February 16th, March 2nd, March 30th, November 16th, and December 7th, 2017, at the Florence Gardens Clubhouse, 3803 Florence Boulevard, Florence, Arizona. Item D, recommendation of an approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control on American Legion Number 9 application for a temporary extension of premises patio permit for the Cornhole Cup Event on January 28th, 2017, at 441 North Main Street, Florence, Arizona. Item E, recommendation to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control on the assumption of the Blessed Virgin Mary Roman Catholic Parish's application for a special event liquor license for their 5th Annual Parish Festival on February 11th, 2017, at 221 East 8th Street, Florence, Arizona. Item F, recommendation of approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control on the Coolidge Florence Elks Lodge 2350 special event liquor license application for their prison-run event to be held on February 12th, 2017, at the Charles Whitlow Memorial Rodeo Grounds, 4900 South Canal Parkway, Florence, Arizona. Item G, receive and file the following board and commission minutes, May 25th, July 27th, September 28th, and October 26th, 2016, 150th Year Anniversary Celebration ad hoc committee minutes, and September 8th, October 19th, and November 17th, 2016, Arts and Culture Commission minutes. Does any member of the council have anything that they would like to take off of the consent agenda? I'd like to take item B off. Item B. Any other member of council? Any member of the audience? Okay, at this time, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, retracting item B.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of item B.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Item number B, Karen.
I just have a question on Exhibit A to the agreement. Item Roman 4A talks about scope is from the town main tap until line daylights inside home. Does that exclude the Johnson Utilities main tap?
That's an excellent question. It should not. We should confirm that, but this is purely for people's private property included in the Town of Florence. It shouldn't make a difference if it's a city water main or a Johnson Utilities water main. This is like car insurance. It's on their individual infrastructure on the water and the sewer side, so it really doesn't have anything to do with who the provider is. It's insuring the area from the service to the person's property.
Okay, can we just revise that appendix or that exhibit before the agreement is
Mayor and council member, we can make that as part of the motion, and then, of course, we'll have to confirm that with company, but I think if it's a point of clarification, it shouldn't be an issue.
That works. I make a motion to approve item 7B on the consent agenda, with the exception of modifying Exhibit A to include the Johnson Utilities main tap as well.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, new business. Item A, we have discussion, approval, disapproval of board and commission appointments to and authorization to continue to accept applications until all seats are filled. Lisa Garcia, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Mayor and members of council, the items presented before you tonight were the applications that had been received to date. That did not require any type of interview process. So at this time, we have one person who has submitted from the Arts and Culture Commission, that is Joanne Cochran. That leaves one vacancy still available. The district advisory commission, we have had zero applications at this time, so we do have one seat still available. The IDA, Industrial Development Authority, also has one seat available. The library advisory board, at the time of this agenda item, did have one person that submitted an application, and that is Sherry Berger. Since that time, we have received Eugene Horan's application and intend on bringing it back at the next council meeting. For Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, this is the hot board of the season. We do have three applications pending in the clerk's office at this time. We will ask for the mayor to appoint a committee made up of a council liaison, as well as a Parks and Recreation Board and staff liaison to do applications and to permit and to suggest who they would like the appointees to be. Planning and zoning, we have two vacancies. With Mr. Robert Schmidt moving from the Parks and Recreation Board, if the council so approves tonight, that'll leave one vacancy for planning and zoning and open up another seat for Parks and Recreation. And of course, as always, when we interview our candidates, we like to let them know what other seats are available so that hopefully we'll keep all three people interested in serving in the town of Florence. At this time, we would ask that you make the appointments, and mayor, we will get with you to set up that interview committee.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I need a motion to reappoint Georgianne Cochran to the Arts and Culture Commission with a term to expire December 31st, 2019.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Georgianne Cochran to the Arts and Culture Commission with a term to expire December 31st, 2019.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item two, reappointment of Sherry Berger to the Joint Library Advisory Board with a term to expire December 31st, 2018. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Sherry Berger to the Joint Library Advisory Board with a term to expire December 31st, 2018.
A second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and multiple seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item three, appoint Robert Schmidt to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a term to expire December 31st, 2017, and accept the termination of his appointment to the Parks and Recreation Board effective December 31st, 2016. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Robert Schmidt to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a term to expire December 31st, 2017, and accept the termination of his appointment to the Parks and Recreation Board effective December 31st, 2016.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, item B, discussion approval and disapproval of a professional services contract with NewTrend Architectural Services LLC for architectural support and one-stop-shop consulting services in an amount not to exceed $150,000. Public Works, Chris Salas.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I stand before you to request approval of the professional services contract with NewTrend Architectural Services and architectural support and one-stop-shop consulting service in amount not to exceed $150,000. The gentleman who has been working with the town for approximately now two and a half months has been providing services to streamline our one-stop-shop, to help establish the connections between the different departments, to analyze independently the things that we are doing an excellent job on, the things that we need to continue to improve upon, and maybe things that aren't being done that need to be done. NewTrend is also able to provide both training and mentoring services for our two inspectors in the fire department, as well as the building safety department, to become a building official. Previously, those jobs were done through contract services of Will Dan Brown and Associates. The town, while working to get off of the consultants, will hopefully be more fiscally responsible in the future and, again, be able to provide better services. There's no doubt that when services are provided by individuals of the community, that there's a better connection, a better understanding of how our own community works and functions, the needs of the community. Lastly, NewTrend is going to be able to provide services on our code adoption, our forthcoming code adoption to the 2012 international codes. This individual, NewTrend Architectural Services, has done this multiple times with other communities in the past and has provided these services. So there's an understanding of what needs to be done from the review of the errata, as well as what is important and what amendments are needed, what will we be adopting, what will be excluding, and the formation of all those. It's quite unique. It's not something that is done regularly. Again, it can be up to eight years between different codes and adoptions. So these are services that the town are requesting and needing. With that, any questions?
Yes, I don't understand the financial impact. You say it's $25,000 to be funded from the community development and the fire department professional services account.
I apologize. I didn't expand on that previously. The proposed fiscal impact to the town's budget is approximately $25,000 out of town resources. The additional will be paid by developers through reviews or requests for reviews. One of such projects, I know it has multiple names today, I believe it's called the Windmill Winery Expansion, and that development team headed by Harold Christ is asking for expedited reviews, and just the sheer size of that project would not allow us today to stay up with inspections and do the reviews, and meet expedited reviews that are self-imposed, but nonetheless, the town has the ability to contract, provide excellent customer services while not impacting any other developments. So all of those will be passed through, so the developer will pay those fees, and then the town will collect those fees, and will pay NewTrend through that process, through the contract. So there's only a proposed $25,000 impact to our operating expenses, and the rest will be paid by developers.
Does community development, the fire department have any problem with that?
Karen, did you have something as well?
I just think it's great that we have an opportunity to train our in-house staff to take on some of the duties that consultants have done in the past. However, I have a question about whether or not, once these on-staff employees take on these additional duties, will it be necessary to hire additional people to take their place?
I got it, Chris. We've already determined that there's a need to fill the frozen building inspector position, and it's actually advertised at this time, I believe. Our first review was today, right, Scott? So, yeah, without Will Dan, as you know, we ended those contracts with Will Dan Brown, et cetera, in July. We can't keep up with our current demand inspections and plan review with one inspector. So our intent is, he has a desire to become a building official and acquire more education, certification, or to do that, and to specialize in crossover between the plumbing code, the electrical code, the building code, the fire code, the safety code, the building maintenance code, and be a real expert in that for the town of Florence without us contracting that out, and still be able to do inspections outside of that, but focus specifically on plan review, something that we have been sending to consultants for many years. And then the other inspector, this person to be hired, would focus on doing inspections in the future. At this time, Jason is not certified to be a building official. So one of the things that NewTrend is going to do going forward, and quite honestly has been doing for a couple of months, is working with Jason on that, getting him ready to take those tests and move forward. So in a way, it's not creating more positions, it is utilizing existing positions that the council has funded in the past. But yes, we'll have to have more than one person, and we're already on the way to do that.
Thank you. Becky, did you have anything?
No.
Okay, if there's no more questions, I need a motion at this time.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the approval of a professional service contract with NewTrend Architectural Services LLC for architectural support and one-stop-shop consulting services in an amount not to exceed $150,000.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much. Item C, discussion approval, disapproval to adopt Task Order Number 3A in an amount not to exceed $52,206, and Task Order Number 3B in an amount not to exceed $24,000 with EUSI LLC for Public Works Management Support and Consulting Services. Brent Billingsley and Chris Salas.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. As the town council knows and understands, water is a precious resource and an important part of the town of Florence's future growth. The town manager and staff have been working with the Central Arizona Groundwater Replenishment District to fully understand the town's groundwater pumping rights, long-term storage credits, and how this affects the town's ability to grow. A big part of the town's ability to facilitate future growth is recharge our treated affluent wastewater, recharging. During the CIP process last year, a reclamation project at the wastewater plant was identified as an important project and also approved in this year's budget. The project would consist of completing clean closure permit and repurposing existing ponds. The town manager and staff have been meeting with a large landholder in coordination with the recharge project and need to in the future coordination. And Task Order 3B is to develop and provide permitting services for the water accounting, recovery well, and groundwater savings facility permitting for that large landholder. After many months of coordinating with EUSI, I and staff view EUSI as another member of staff, one who has significant contacts and availability to react accordingly. While other staff members are inundated with day-to-day operations, it is exceedingly important for us to have a member of staff who we have the ability to make a quick call to, and they can make changes very rapidly and on the fly. It has been a great relationship with EUSI so far in that all the time that we can rely on quick turnarounds on much-needed items. EUSI has coordinated and participated in all the meetings so far, and has been instrumental in ensuring all the important decision-makers are in the room, so no time is wasted. And our individual contact with EUSI, Paul Hendricks, has previously served on the CAG-RD Board, as well as being the president of the Arizona Water Association. Brent, would you like to add anything to that?
Since I'm on the next item, I might as well. It's kind of the same trend as the previous item. We've been trying to train our personnel, we've been trying to gain education on our personnel, and we've been very successful. Many of you have gone out, toured the plants, you've seen the improvements that have occurred, the wastewater plants and our water distribution system, and in my next presentation, you'll see the amount of work that's being done that couldn't have all been done without the assistance of EUSI. Most importantly, we have gotten the consent order against the town that existed a year ago dismissed within a six-month period, having to do with EUSI. This is a continuing trend. In terms of item A, when council approved, the town moving forward with recharge in the future of our wastewater, and we talked about it again a couple of weeks ago, actually four weeks ago at our meeting, it's come to our attention, we can't move forward immediately with recharge permitting because unfortunately, those ponds that we no longer utilize at the south plant haven't all been closed out yet. They haven't been clean-closed. They haven't been approved by the state as being clean-closed, even though they look like it if you go out there and look. So when it came down to work on the permitting, our intent, and actually implementation last week, is our staff has sent out to our on-call the ability to do the analysis, design, and permitting, which I told you is about an 18-month process, or can be an 18-month process for the recharge. What we didn't plan for is the fact that we need to close out the existing ponds at the plant. So I came up with a bright idea. Why don't we do it ourselves? Instead of paying an outside consultant to completely take charge of that effort and handle that, why don't we do it with our own staff? And certainly, EUSI and Mr. Hendricks are an extension of our staff, and maybe we'll learn some things along the process and save a little bit of money. So Task Order A is to specifically have Mr. Hendricks help us do internally the closeout on those existing trickling filters. And that's what you see as alternative, or the first item. Is it number two? Task Order Two? Task Three. 3A. Task 3B is a separate item. Task 3B requires some expertise. As part of our recharge and our permitting for recovery wells for our existing wells, we have an opportunity to work with landowners going forward to make sure, and as I mentioned to council about a month ago, that when we take on new projects, when we complete final plots, when we look at annexations, the importance of looking at existing agricultural water rights and well sites is vital. We've had a couple of meetings with a large landowner here in town, and we've spoke to him about the importance of those considerations. He happens to currently have a contract with the town of Florence and currently purchases our treated wastewater to irrigate farmland here in town. You all know who I'm talking about. There is interest by him and his folks to enhance that partnership with the town and our future viability for water. As part of that, we need to do some technical analysis to see how we can and may do that going forward to benefit the citizens of Florence and to help him facilitate development in the future. We need somebody independent that's part of us, part of our staff, to conduct that analysis, and that's what the second item is. Is that clearer?
Clear as mud.
Okay, sorry. I don't mean to make it muddy, but that's essentially what it is.
Thank you. Are there any other questions by council?
Brent, can we take advantage of our water augmentation staff on any of this consulting?
The first item regarding the testing and the closeout, that's not something that water augmentation folks do. They deal with water credits and paper, paper water as it relates to money. The second item is more relational to existing wells permitting through the state, analysis of that, and determination of how you do a public-private partnership for the future of water. Once again, kind of a cutting-edge thing, things that a lot of folks aren't doing. Certainly, if necessary, if this is approved tonight, I will give Paul the authority to work with the Water Augmentation Authority, but I'm not sure that the other partner that we're doing the analysis for is going to want anybody involved. They've made it pretty clear, this is a need-to-know type of discussion because it's their future, their water, their property values. They don't want other people knowing what they got going on, if that makes sense. They're not trying to hide things, but they're also not wanting to disclose their competitive advantage.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no more questions, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve Task Order Number 3A and 3B to the professional service contract with EUSI for the Public Works Management Support and Consulting Services.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Item nine, town managers report.
Madam Mayor, members of the town council, I'm very happy to be back in front of you again tonight with more good news. I mean, I couldn't be more ecstatic than the findings of our financial audit. You should be very proud. Our staff should be very proud of the results of that audit, and if you don't have a copy of it, come and see me tomorrow, and you can thumb through my copy. But to also report on achievements that are occurring...
But to also report on achievements that are occurring from the hard work of our staff and certainly from the support of our council for the residents of Florence. Three main focuses tonight. One has to do with streets. One has to do with water treatment, and the other one has to do with wastewater. Certainly, there's more things going on than these, but these are big items that are included in the CIP, and I think it's important to recognize our staff and the hard work that they're doing. On this first slide, of course, everyone recognizes the Main Street Intersections, the Streetscape Project. Streetscape Project is now complete, and we, I personally, and I know many of the council members and certainly many of the staff, have received a lot of positive comments regarding those projects. There's a lot of excitement in the community regarding the investment in our downtown. But also, I wanted to highlight on our new sign that went up on the Main Street Extension about a month ago. It's really funny because I have to tell this story. It's a brief anecdote. I got a call from a council member and a couple of other citizens of Florence, and since that time, several others have come up to me and talked to me about it, about why, when they were installing the sign, were they having the arrow point in the wrong direction? Well, as soon as I heard that the arrow was going to point in the wrong direction on the sign, I left the meeting I was in. I don't think Lisa was with me. I think Mark was with me. And we went immediately out, jumped in my truck, and drove down to the Main Street Extension. And when I got out, the guy was already throwing his hands in the air. I think that Jess had talked to him before we got there, and said, "Listen, why don't you stick to whatever you do and leave the sign installation to the sign installation professionals?" And I went, "Whoa." And he said, "Let me show you something." And he took me over there, and there was a big bolt in the middle of the sign. It's about three-quarters of an inch in diameter, and that whole thing was swinging from that bolt. The way that it worked was there was an external or an internal, essentially, angle iron frame, and then there's a flat metal piece that mounts on the frame. So all he was doing was mounting that outside panel on that frame, and then the thing spins around, and then he puts the other panel on the other side. But a lot of people thought that he was putting the sign facing the wrong direction. He knew what was the right direction, but boy, was he not happy when I showed up to tell him, "What are you doing with the arrow facing the wrong way?" But funny, funny little story. I think the sign looks great. I myself haven't received any positive comments about it yet, but I've heard others have. Second, regarding water treatment and distribution, the photo on the left reflects the rodeo well. There's been a lot of discussion over the past few years, and certainly during this last year in the CIP process, about some water quality issues that have occurred traditionally at the rodeo well, which is not a potable well for the town of Florence. I need to put that right out there. But is a well that has been used to water horses, to put water on the rodeo grounds during rodeo events, et cetera. It's not part of our testing protocol for the town because it's not part of our potable system and doesn't feed our water mains. However, as a well that we own, we want to make sure that proper controls are in place. That well has been all refitted. Our portion of that project, we assisted the folks at the Sheriff's Posse. They were able to get a tank, the tank that you see there, the black tank, donated, as well as a pressure pump. We went out and assisted in pouring the concrete on-site, and then we have installed a new chlorine injection system there that is a potable-grade system to make sure that if that water were to be used as drinking water by folks and what have you, would be treated, and everything would be good. Our staff did a remarkable job and did most of that work themselves instead of having an outside contractor. The First Street Waterline Project, many of you understand and know and have discussed with me multiple times the quality of First Street. As I explain to everyone all the time, you don't want us to go in and fix a street before you fix the underlying problem. And the underlying problem on First Street has been water leaks that have caused the sub-bays to expand and contract, which causes all the whoop-de-dos and the holes and the patches in First Street. I'm happy to report that our first phase of the First Street Project has been completed. We've gone out and replaced all those taps, put them on the new main. The old main is not abandoned yet, but it will be abandoned in the future. But we've now reached a point where we can move forward with design on First Street for the drainage and the pavement portion. The third one was a hot topic during the budget last year, if you recall, and that was the noise that was being produced by well number three. Analysis was done. Sound level meter was actually purchased by the town, and various noise readings were plotted. There was an investigation done as to what the source of the noise was. It was determined that there was a mechanical ratchet on the pump. The easiest way to explain what a mechanical ratchet is, is it's a ratcheting mechanism that goes around the pipe that only allows it to turn one direction, doesn't allow it to back-turn. So that mechanical ratchet, which was not required for that equipment but was installed as part of that installation, that mechanical ratchet was removed, and now the major source of that noise has been mitigated for. Of course, we went back out, retested, and there was a definite reduction in the noise produced from well number three. Wastewater Treatment Plant, we've been busy. There's lots of stuff going on both at the north and the south. If you look at the pictures and you start on the left, that is our new pressure vessel and controls that we have installed at the north plant. If you remember discussions during the budget, there was a tank there that had been a sprinkler a number of times in the past, and we'd continued to weld pieces of plate steel to it to patch it, and it just kept springing new leaks. This project's been ongoing. That pressure vessel had to be specially designed and constructed. It's a sand filter. All the piping has been replaced. Everything is back new and modern. Some of the lack of, how do you want to say? Duplicate systems that allowed you to transfer from going to the golf course with the water to discharge and back into our basin. All that plumbing has been secured. At some point, we will be actually providing an awning over that system, but certainly an upgrade from what we had there before, and our sprinkler effects should be reduced for the next 20 years. We've installed a new mag meter to better track our effluent. We didn't have a working meter. Mag stands for magnet, but we didn't have a working meter that was able to let us accurately log how much water we were treating and sending each direction. So now, we can track that, and as multiple folks on the council have gone out with me to the north plant, and I talked to you about the equalization basin that we put in effect to help the health of the tanks. What we're finding, especially at this time of year, there's lots of fats, oil, and grease that are making it to our plant. Those kill the bugs. A lot of that can probably be attributed to holiday cooking, especially tamales, that folks send a lot of oil and grease down the pipes. We've installed a new blower in that equalization basin and new protocols to help try to break down the fats, oil, and grease. I think it was Councilman Anderson that went out with me about a month and a half ago, and we had a nice, about four inches of foam on one part of the plant. That was fats, oil, and grease that was going into that basin. So the good news is, we're keeping that out of the main plant. The better news is, we've come up with a protocol to try and treat that to decrease that problem. At the south plant, as you know, several items were budgeted as part of the CIP. Of course, you approved the purchase of a new dewatering press and really enjoyed my description of that when I talked about the cake at the last meeting. I've heard lots of people say, "Why do you have to talk about that stuff?" I apologize, but that new dewatering equipment, it has been purchased and will be delivered in the next couple of months. In addition, we've spent a lot of time, and our staff spent a lot of time, Jason's here tonight, working on our chlorine feed pumps as well as our dechlorination system at the plant. And one project that has been lingering for several months and we've now got under control is installation of a new post-EQ, our post-equalization pump. As you know, we were having problems with our pumps clogging up because the pumps that we were using, very similar to irrigation pumps, and the impellers, we had screens to protect the impellers. Those screens, because our fine screen wasn't working at the plant, if you recall, the last couple of years, let a lot of stuff, bad stuff, come in the plant that was paper and plastic and all kinds of those things that were, we were worried we were going to damage the impellers and the pumps, and so therefore, clogging the screens, and we had our guys down once a week in rowboats down there cleaning the screens. Not a pleasant thing. We've come up with a solution regarding post-EQ, and it's working at this point. What are the upcoming things? There's lots of fun upcoming stuff that I'm going to be able to report on in the future, including the Well One Booster Station, which is going to allow us to feed Caliente and Florence Gardens from the wells that we have in the southern part of the town, so we don't have an isolated system to the north. Or vice versa, would allow us to serve from water from that storage tank and well to the south. If we had problems with one or more of our wells or booster stations in the south, having a redundant system is clearly pretty important. We'll be coming back to you on that. Well Five Booster, we're already underway. Well Five Booster is the one that was very quickly brought to my attention when I started here. That's where the old historic tank is and the booster set up there. That project should be done in the next couple of months, mid-January, so even faster. Tank recoding, you just awarded that contract, so we will be taking those tanks out of service, sandblasting them and recoating those tanks. They'll be good for another 20 years. The water and sewer rate study, we are out for advertisement right now with respect to that. The development impact fee study, the wastewater treatment basin closure, which you approved tonight, which our staff and EUSI will start working on. North and south recharge permitting, we should be coming back to council. Keep in mind, it's an on-call contract, so we won't be coming back to council for approval. You've already approved the contract, but I told you, we would be notifying you as part of the consent agenda when we do a contract award with an on-call. We will be coming forward with that north-south recharge permitting at the next meeting or the following meeting. And the ad-away signal, many of you drove by it tonight. Are you starting to get excited? Pedestals are being installed this week, cabinets this week. I can't wait to have a ribbon-cutting out on-site, but we're getting there.
Cabinets are installed.
Oh, very good. I didn't know they were in.
They're there.
How about that? So I haven't been out there. So, thank you. Oh, sorry.
At the last meeting, you talked about the water lines down in south of town. What's the status of that? Is that an upcoming project or?
I think that you're referring to the water loop and some of the challenges regarding size of lines.
Yes.
Chris, go ahead.
The 12-inch water loop, the infrastructure project, is in the process of the scope of being written right now, and we'll be starting the design this year with a proposed project starting in July of next year in the fiscal budget. We have it programmed in there. Obviously, the town manager and I are working on next year's CIP, starting that project next year construction. There is a part of the project that could get started this year if Circle K moves forward.
That was my question. What's that going to be, the impact of Circle K and the new medical facility?
I apologize. Two very different projects. A portion of the 12-inch is directly affecting Circle K, and then there is a separate project that is for the medical office building. Are you referring to the medical office building portion of that project?
Well, both of them.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Mayor, Mr. Councilmember, those projects are going to be fully dependent upon development agreements. One of those development agreements is in for our review, and there was actually a lot of conversation regarding that development agreement last week when I was gone. We have a draft. We're waiting on some very important information. It will have two different components that are critical. One is the DA with the developer, which is the medical facility. The second is an IGA with the Florence Unified School District. Both are on their way. We've agreed to terms, I believe, with both parties, but we're waiting on some engineering and some survey to be completed that still isn't done yet. We hope to bring that development agreement back as soon as the next meeting. However, I'm not going to promise that because we've had some delays here lately. And the delays are not on our side, by the way. The second project regarding Circle K, it's in their court. We haven't received a DA application yet. I know that they're building a number of facilities right now. I don't know where ours is on the list, but the one thing I would say is, please keep in mind, we don't have money in our current budget and CIP to construct the water loop. We're going to utilize some of the funds in the CIP that we had designated for maintenance, line extension, et cetera, to do our portion of those two development agreements if they occur.
Good, thank you.
Wait, Brent, before you say, is there any other questions from the manager's report? I do have one question. In regards to the financial report, will it also be made available online for residents, or would they need to come in if they wanted to take a look at it?
The audit has to be online. It's a requirement. So that'll be online, and we'll make sure that Dave's presentation is online as well. Jess will take care of that.
All right, excellent. And the only reason that I did clarify it is just because you had invited the department heads in to look at your copy.
Yes.
I wanted to make sure that residents knew that they also had access to a copy.
Yes, ma'am. And Jess will make sure that the CIP updates are on our website too for our CIP.
Okay, and again, excellent job. The outcome, tremendous hard work, so thank you.
Thanks to the staff. Actually, I would like to add a little bit to the manager's report as it relates to some of the street projects, if I could, real quickly. There's several other CIP projects that I thought were worth updating on there. The First Street Project, we actually have received today, a few hours ago, the drainage report. So this project, the pavement portion of the project is under design, and in a few days, I should be receiving the draft geotechnical report as well. The geotechnical report is the report that determines the structural section, how much ABC and asphalt is underneath the road, aggregate base course, I apologize, aggregate base course and asphalt underneath the road. So we are moving along nicely on this. This design is scheduled to be completed in May of this year, 2017. Hunt Highway, the geotechnical report, a draft was submitted last week, and staff is out there currently getting additional traffic counts along Hunt Highway last week to update it. So if you keep running over those tubes, that's what we're doing, is determining the traffic and the vehicle classification type. That helps us determine, again, the structural section of that road. Florence Heights, our first public meeting approximately two weeks ago, we delivered flyers to everyone in that neighborhood, and we held a public meeting to inform the residents of that project, and the draft geotechnical report for that has been completed. That is essentially just a mill and overlay or just overlay project. The design portions for Florence Gardens Phase Four and Phase Five are currently out with the on-calls, attached with a draft geotechnical report for that as well, and so we'll be starting on the designs for Four and Five very soon as well.
Do you know how long those tubes will be out for?
They should be pulled, and I should update the ad-away signal as well. There are tubes going out on ad-away signal east, west, and south of the intersection to determine the timing needs. The last time that was counted, I think, was 2012 or 2014 in the report, so we're verifying the counts to make sure that our timing is as accurate as possible. We are shooting for turning on the signal by the 23rd. We do not have confirmation yet on the power yet. It still hasn't, we have not received phone calls, so approximately now it is January 2nd or January 3rd energization of the traffic signal. But we should be done with all construction, essentially minus the EDU portion by the 23rd. So tomorrow, there will be an officer at the intersection while the mast arms, the luminary arms, and the poles are being set, so there will be some impacts to traffic minor. We are going to start that at 9:00 a.m., so we make sure that the morning traffic, the rush hour, is done and through before we start construction, understanding that there's probably a lot of transient traffic out there very early in the morning, people driving to their other destinations. And then from 9:00 till 5:00, we'll be out there installing the additional hardware.
All right, thank you. Now, one of the positives is winter break has started for Florence Unified, so that will decrease some of that traffic.
I guess, as well as, we talked about the tube counters earlier. We are in the process of getting quotes for intersection counts to help us with our CIP planning for traffic signals of the future, the five or six locations, as well as traffic counts across the town on important roads, Arizona Farms Road, Hunt Highway through multiple, multiple segments, just large roads, ad-away. So you'll be running over a lot of tubes soon.
Excellent, thank you. Moral of the story, where you want to see a traffic signal, run over it repeatedly. At this time, we'll move into call to the public. This is the second call to the public. At this time, would anybody like to speak? At this time, would anybody like to speak? Okay, I do not see anybody coming from the public to speak, so I'm going to close call to the public. Call to the council for current event only. Councilmember Hawkins?
Well, on the manager's report, when you were talking about the sign on the Main Street Extension, in the last couple of weeks, I've gotten between eight and 10, I think, at least eight unsolicited compliments on how great it looks and how they thought that was a great thing we did there. So we're getting some positive feedback on it. And that's about it.
Excellent. Councilmember Galen?
Hope everybody has a good Christmas and a safe one.
I just wanted to wish the citizens of Florence and the town staff a very Merry Christmas.
Excellent. Councilmember Anderson?
Two things, Mayor. I attended the Pennell County Water Augmentation Meeting, and I've copied all of you on an update of what went on there. But as the town manager has talked here tonight on several occasions about different water issues, this is becoming such a major issue in the state that we need to be, keep this more aware because we are seeing more problems and more complications now because of the problems. You know, there's allocations that are going to go into effect, restrictions that are going to affect, so we need to be made aware of this. I've tried to make the council aware of the various websites that the state has provided us, that you can go on and find out information about what's going on at the state level about the water. The second thing I want to talk about is, I want to thank the police department. We've had a couple incidents in our school zone, Anthem K8, and the chief has responded. His team has responded. It's a tough thing because it's our citizens that are causing the problem, and I want to appeal to our citizens that are watching tonight and to the parents that are driving in these school districts to be aware of what's going on, and watch your speed. Don't run over our crosswalk guards because that's been a near miss twice in the last month. We've had a couple near misses. I don't know what's going on at the K8 downtown, but I do hear about the one out in Anthem. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wall?
Just want to say also Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to our staff, and thank you for all your hard work this year. I hope everyone has a Happy New Year. We're looking forward to 2017. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Larson?
I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for giving me the tours around. I was able to go see the police station with Chief Hughes, and he was very gracious in hosting us and showing us around, and I really appreciated seeing it firsthand, so thank you for that. Also, I had to thank Brent and Lisa for showing me around some of the other water aquifers and such, so thank you. And also echoing everyone here, just wishing you guys all Merry Christmas and look forward to seeing you next couple of weeks.
Okay, excellent. Just to remind you of some upcoming events, this coming, the 21st at 10:00 a.m., the Great American Puppet Theater is coming to present a Christmas mouse at the library at 10 o'clock in the morning. It is free. Families are encouraged to participate. On December 22nd, all aboard the Polar Express is coming with hot cocoa, cookies, and I heard there might be a special man there with a white beard. And lastly, New Year's Eve is going to be an amazing celebration on Main Street. I hope to see everybody there. It starts at 6:00 p.m. until midnight. We are going to have live music. Ashley Wyland will also be there. She was one of the presenters from Road to Country Thunder that came out. There'll be inflatables for the kids, food vendors, beer gardens, you know, sectioned off to keep it a family-friendly environment for everybody. Very safe, fireworks at midnight. We hope to see everybody there. And with that, I'd like to wish our staff, residents, everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Spend some time with your families, enjoy them. And with that, I need a motion.
Make a motion. We adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting closed. Adjourned.